Calling Dean Norton. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today is July 14th. Can I have a roll call please?
Larry?
Here.
Aaron to your fire?
Here.
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 Is there anybody from the audience that we should do across the board? If not, report to the Village Commission's Beautification Commission, Mr. -- I'm sorry. Hi, Mr. Morris. 623rd meeting. Anything you can bring up, and I don't know where the mistake is, is Jan Redd Van Ramshorn is on the Beautification Commission. She was appointed prior to this. She isn't listed in the minutes. I don't know if it was on my sheet or -- but if not, we'll have to take the correction from Ms. Ridge. Jan Redd Van Ramshorn.
Was that on those?
I don't remember.
On her receipt.
And I don't have it with me.
Okay. Gail, she said it wasn't.
Okay, so we'll take care of that. Are motion approved, Mr. Morris? Any additional corrections?
Motion approved.
There's a second.
Second.
There's a second question. Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Yes.
And now we'll have the Commission's Gail.
Beautification is not meeting this month. We're going to have our next meeting in August. It's the second Tuesday of the month. That's all I have.
For the July Commission, Ron?
Yeah, very successful year this year. We were blessed with good weather for all four days. Marge Morris from Beecher won the 4th of July raffle car. A big thank you to all the local citizens who helped out at this event. Also, a special thank you to George Scudma for the use of his garage. Let's see, other than that, things were quite successful. That's it.
On behalf of the board, I think I'd like to thank the entire Commission for all the work that they've done. Appreciate it. Youth Commission, try to be first.
This Friday, we have a water park trip planned. It's at Splash Valley Water Park right down in Kekke. It's from 7:30 to 9:30. The entire park is just ours. It's a private ground, so it's open to any Beecher residents. And then August 15th is movie night in the park. That will be moved forward as well as on that. It's at August 15th. Yes, August 15th.
Thank you for the roll call.
We have not had a meeting recently. We're going to get fired back up again by the end of early August, September, so I don't have any recording.
Trusty, clear.
There's your report.
Okay. If you flip to the accounts page, you'll see that month over month, we have increased balances around the 1.9 million versus 1.8 million last month. That's chiefly general, more real estate payments, tax payments that come in. And the same thing with our debt account, which taxes and utilities got the increases there, somewhat offset by O&M. We had large AP last month that came out of O&M, but we are showing increases of $130,000 on village accounts. On the commission accounts, we remain relatively stagnant. The 4th of July obviously was cut off right on 6:30, so a lot happened after 6:30 today. But at that point, we had received some donations that looked like a firework park lights. And the youth commission increased their balances. Looks like Chief took care of a few things and has to procure some light there. So, in general, it's a month we expected. It was a good collection month for the tax side of things, so that was good. No surprises there. If we flip to the graph, you'll see the graphic representation of what took place following the pattern that we wanted to see and are seeing, which is increases in both the village accounts and our general fund. It was back up to the $700,000 where they're at the end of June. So, that's what we're looking for and what we have. The recap of the 625 Dixie account, I just want to maintain that so that we keep our eye on the monies there and the progress. Obviously, things are going to start moving along, but bills coming in and progress we made, so there'll probably be a lot more activity going forward. Really, what we just had here in addition to the previous ones was there was startup costs that we just put out and a little bit of demolition and repair and maintenance. So, we're standing at the 258 mark at the end of June in that account. And then the last page I have is our commission checks and the other funds that are dispersed outside of our AP. You can see the activity in the 4th of July prior to the 4th, somewhat larger than normal probably. And otherwise, it was really our payroll related and taxes relating to payroll to make up the most of it longer, I feel, if not. So, nothing special here. Everything appears to be in good shape and as we're expecting, so.
Any questions of the treasurer? I make a motion approving the treasurer's report and the financial activities for the prior month?
Second.
Motion for, there was a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes. The current Nelson here for the July.
Nelson.
Do you get copies on the front of you? Now, this is a draft, so it's not ready for publication yet. Next month, it'll be taking shape. On the first page, the revenues, for the most part, are pretty much in. The sponsors will increase a little bit. We have a little bit of money outstanding there. But if you'll notice, the total income, $156,000 and some change. Now, if you compare that with last year, we're down about $20,000. But compare that with the three years prior, we're higher than all three of those years. Last year, we're just standing here. This year, the one that took the biggest hit was the beer. It's down about $10,000. People didn't wear jackets or didn't wear jackets two or three of those nights. Then if you go down to page three, there are some of these expenses that are not in yet. I estimate them. For instance, we have taxes to pay on some of the gaming events. Go to page three. We have a couple of standing bills on publicity, where we put the flyers in the newspapers. And then if you go to page four, a recap of the expenses. And then we have the total net. This year, the total net's a little over $26,000, over $27,000. And last year, it was over $38,000. But if you look at the three preceding years for last year, our net before the park expenses, this year was a good year. If you look at the park expenses, we have about $21,000 this year in park expenses, which is higher than any of the other years. So, it gives us a net and compares very carefully with the previous years mixed up for last year, which was outstanding. So, again, next year will be, our next month, this will take much better shape, much more accurate.
And Nelson, did you stay on page four, the park expenses? What was grounds equipment and maintenance?
They bought a big expense there. There was a new, something like a gator.
Okay.
Just under $8,000. So, if that question's there, it would be more in line.
And if you look at your revenues, it looks like although the beer stand was hit around just under 10 grand, you also need to look at areas that you also were deficient based on the expected budget. Some of those are going to be where your vendors are at. Looks like you came down about another $2,000 off the vendors and another $2,000 off the food. So, both of those are substantial hits to the diligent side or the 4th of July side of the carnival. Because we had a lot of people.
That's because I believe the carnival's food vendors were outstanding. They were pulling out of our side of the park. We never had that.
They had a huge truck sitting right on the way out of that main area in that back.
Oh, yeah.
There were like two food trucks sitting right there. You couldn't leave that without hitting that area.
This carnival had a much bigger food operation than the carnival that we had before. And of course, the last page is the income, strictly income during the carnival by day, by hour, and so forth. And if you'll notice, the beer was down $13,000 compared to last year. Overall, we're down $16,000. So, that 16, 13 out of the beer. The others had minor decreases compared to last year.
How about car raffle?
Car raffle, $43,970. This year, slightly below last year, was about $45,000 last year, but much higher than the three previous years, $38,000, $35,000, $36,000. Argue that. You get to it, right? It's all because of that.
Yeah, boy.
It's all because of that. George let you use this.
Yeah. That's right, that's what saves.
Any other questions? At August, it'll be, you know, if you really see where we are.
The various supports were also provided as for the previous month. And the bills are provided to us under separate cover, and what you'll see in bold are the items that were added. After we received those bills, there's about three or four of them on there. An additional bill from Arrow. One of the most substantial portions of the billing on this is the purchase of two squads, which forces are known to be very high. The newer bills aren't really substantially large, other than, like I said, Thomas Dodge is the purchase of the two Dodge Challengers for the police department. It's around $49,000. And then also Waltz's rebate in taxes is also pretty substantial. Any questions on the bills? I make a motion approving the bills for the month of June 2014, a total of $238,134.53.
Second.
Motion for a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Trusty, you, Allen?
Yes, we need to make some payments, payment of bills on 625 Dixie Highway, the new village hall in the amount of $33,911.2. That's for the Diebolt Prairie disposal, Langley's roofing, and J.R. Jones. Most of the bill is for the roof, which is $32,905. So, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $33,911.2.
Second. Motion for a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Layla?
Yes.
No.
Klaus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, then we have a proposal from Diebolt to replace the drive-up window and audio system at the new village hall, 625 Dixie Highway, for the amount of $7,457.26. This will give us the one drive-up bay for residents' customers' convenience. This portion of the project needs to be completed now so the counters can match the drawer box and so forth. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposal from Diebolt in the amount of $7,457.26.
Second. Motion for a second. And just to comment on this particular item, it's a Diebolt product, so it has to be a Diebolt product in this building.
Existing as a Diebolt?
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
No.
Ray?
Yes. That's.
Trusty, for.
Considering engineering services agreement in the amount of $150,000 to complete Phase 1 engineering on Pennfield Street from Reed to Dixie in order to apply for federal STP funds. There's a bunch of information in there. Just to kind of recap, this was kind of brought to the committee. As of recently, this was opened back up, which runs through the county, correct? And it's federal funding. This is what you have to do. This is a project that would be looking to be done in four to five years, but it has to be shovel-ready to be able to apply for this. And to get this shovel-ready, this is what it would take, Phase 1 engineering being done. From day one, since I've been on sewer and water, this has been number one on my wish list. There's always been, you know, the funding, the funding, the funding to be able to do this. This is something that's important. Pennfield is a main, through into the school, parks, downtown, museums, everything else. This area has just been, I mean, it's been a headache, buddy. How many, you have four water main breaks there within one week time?
Well, actually, five.
Five. You know, and this is something that we've talked about, is, you know, how long can you keep putting Band-Aids on? I understand the money situation's going to be tough and tight to pull it off, especially a job of this size and magnitude. But when you think about every water main break that we have on there and what it costs us to fix that, even though we are able to accomplish it all in-house, it's just, you gotta figure out a way to get this done. This is something we discussed at the most recent Public Works Committee meeting. And I think Brian will wholeheartedly agree with me that this is our recommendation to move forward with this. Does anybody have any questions?
One piece of good news, I'll not change the numbers, but the final contract, 1045.
Just to comment too, this is actually a part of the puzzle that became, started to come together approximately one year ago while they began discussing moving, canceling the STP project from Church Road to, in two Pennfields, which would then put it on the wish list about four or five years down the road. And this is just another part of the puzzle that has to be done to have to have it ready so that when the local county government will puts it on the list of funds, we have to be ready to go. This is just part of the puzzle. So, it's one of the things that we, it's been a baby for, and it's been settled for approximately one year.
This includes water main, storm sewer, road, and then the lead.
Kerber gutter.
And sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Where there is sidewalk.
Where there is no sidewalk, we may negotiate that beforehand. There's some portions that don't.
Project started out at $4 million. And if you remember, the registry of Pennfield that was there was what the wish list that we put out to the engineers to try and come up with the price of what they thought it would cost. When that price came back at $4 million.
$4.6.
$4.6 million. It was completely out of our price range, so then we had to start cutting back. And we ended up basically with necessities. Now, that doesn't mean that it's not going to be done in phases in the future, or so on and so forth. We have always said that if we replaced a water main, we fixed a street. And like I said, now the pieces of puzzles all came together, and now we can proceed. Hopefully, it'll be on the funding list within four or five years. You had a timetable, can I remember?
Yeah, we, I want to just clarify something. Water main is not eligible for golden money, for grant money. So, that we have to do 100% on our own. We have it in our project budget. It's 1.4 million federal money, 1.9 million, I don't know. Or it could be the other way around.
Federal share was 1.9. Okay, so our share is 1.4. 870 of that is for the water main, and 530 of that is for our 20% of the road. Now, we are in a book, we're discussing the restoration. I think the restoration number is in that 870 for the water, so maybe we'll get that down to about 700 or 650. So, we can hit this thing as basically a 60, 40, or 70, 30 federal dollar. The unknowns, we got a bridge, we don't know about the bridge deck, if the state's going to accept the existing bridge deck. If they don't, we can include the bridge deck in the project, and that's going to jump that number up.
All right, now we have to inform that the bridge deck doesn't need to be modified.
Right, if it has to, we'll probably add more than half a million to the project. So, there's a lot of unknowns out there, but until we do Phase 1, we don't know the answer. And we'd never be eligible for this money if we don't go for it. Spring or the winter of '16, '17, we do the water main. The summer of '17, we do the road. So, there'll be a couple of month period there where Pennfield will really look like a disaster area, but we're not going to pay to have it restored twice. We'll get the water main in first, and then we'll go ahead and start the curb and garden road.
The reason why we're looking at grouping them together is, the original reason for this thing is to replace the road. But it's foolish to replace a road when you know a full well with the water main below it is a nightmare. It is old pipe that was put in as the village expanded up to Route 1. It's pipe that probably should have been replaced a long time ago, but it's been belt suspenders, just keep it going, keep it going. And we probably spend more money per month after the winter and into the beginning of the summer with Public Works dealing with water main breaks. There was a water main break in front of the fire department right before the 4th. There was another one just west of Route 1 by the old pharmacy. I mean, and you think about it, you're already in July. You've already had two breaks there and another one by the community also. If you look at this, it's sooner or later, we're going to, this thing is going to pop, and it's going to be huge. So, John and I have gone back and forth about this. The only way to really do this is to repair, to replace the main, then replace the road. If we do the road as part of the federal portion, we're going to be ripping it up, guaranteed. So, that's why we grouped it together. And as Bob's indicated, the water main replacement is on us. So, we need to get that fixed before we go and apply the federal funds to get the road replaced. But it all goes down as one group.
How much of Pennfield is covered by this required to the water?
From Phase 1, it only goes from Gould to Dixie. So, that will all be engineered. The question then becomes how far do you want to go? If you definitely want to pick up the bad water main, you gotta go Woodward-Dixie. The engineers think we should go Reed to Dixie.
Because this is all based on Reed to Dixie?
As we get near the railroad tracks, we're going to run into some repo costs.
Anything near railroad tracks?
I want to go with the financing to understand if we proceed with this project. And Brian's going to talk about a loan on the short term, but I want to talk about the long term. The 870, we would get an EPA loan for 20 years on the 870. That would require a payment of $52,200 a year. You're bringing in $40,000 a year in water main replacement charges. You'd have to find another 12 or two in O&M. And you're going to pledge your water main replacement charge for the next 20 years to that project. Just want to make sure you understand that. For the $530,000 to leave the road, the suggestion is maybe go for a 10-year signature loan from a local bank to come up to that $530,000. That would require $66,250 annual payments. We would take that money out of infrastructure account for the next 10 years, leaving us $40,000 a year for the next 10 years in infrastructure for emergency road repairs. One thing the mayor was stressing when we were setting up the financing of this thing is he wanted to make sure that it was money set aside for emergency road repair. Whether or not $40,000 a year is enough, I won't know. But you'll have some MFT money available plus you got $40,000 a year in infrastructure. The short-term loan, $150,000, which Brian's going to discuss next, we would also take that out of infrastructure for the next five years to the $230,000, $37,000. Couple of things that are important with the financing scheme. We still have some flexibility to fix emergency road repairs. We've not touched our 10% additional that we can go for for our front end farm sewer plant, which we're going to have to do in a couple of years. EPA, one of these years is going to send us a letter saying, "Village of Beecher, you have the choice. You've got to spend the $6 million on the sewer." We expect that letter to come around 2016. So, we still have the ability to do the sewer plant project and do Pennfield with this financing scheme. Everyone needs to understand you're pledging many, many years of revenue down the road for this project, which means we just can't decide all, it's okay six blocks of water, so it's not going to happen.
I made a question. If you paid the $150,000 to the engineering, can we be denied the federal, from the federal government?
Doubtful. Because a local board determines that. You will get on the schedule. I can't tell you what's going to be '16, '17, could be further on, but you will eventually be funding the project.
But it's not shut, you can't get anywhere. That's kind of the lynch can they have you do all the upfront to see if it's. And what they're doing, the reason they do that is to verify, is this a real job or are people just applying for loans that really aren't going to be going anywhere? They want to see the plans in place. That's why they kind of force you down that path.
We have already had a discussion to go about only transportation, about this project. And we had, oh, and Larry, did we have to be, did we have Church Road to Pennfield?
Yeah, we have moved Church Road to Pennfield. We just take Church Road off the list. Right now, they're going through a call for projects, which are due August 1st. Those projects will be assembled, and then the committee, which I sit on, ranks those projects and decides what you're going to fund. And it's very possible they could get $300 million worth of projects and they don't know what to do. It's very possible. But the fact that you've got Phase 1 committed, I can't believe all those projects are going to have Phase 1 commitments. And that's why the engineers tell us to get to Phase 1.
Explain to them, Bob, too, that what Tara brought up to us is, you know, as far as scoring and stuff like that, that all these, that every one of these is based on a scoring system. When they make that decision, it was, you know, Tara explained a lot to us how this was a year ago when we decided to take Church Road off of the list. And basically, the main reason why is they look at viability, traffic, everything else, the use of it, and everything is scored. When we basically said, "Okay, yes, we need to take Church off," I mean, she basically broke it down as to what our score would be, and you could just see, there's no way we would get it. Now, you do this project, and what our scores could be. It shows the viability of the project. Do you want to explain any more about the scoring system or?
Is it political? They try to keep it apolitical, but they do spend the money around the county. I mean, it's not like every dollar gets spent for it. Peatone did grass, she rode with this project money last year, I believe it was. If you're familiar, if you drive on the west side of Peatone Ranch, you're going to be cornering up to the water tower pass into high school. They did that project, STP. A lot of projects become an STP. Dixie Highway is an STP project. When we did it through town, it was at $3.5 million. But we got the state to pick up the 20% because it was their road. This is our road, we're going to have to pick it apart. But if you want to get the road done, this is about the only way you're going to get it done.
Ron, your question.
Excuse me, is there lighting included in this or not?
The lighting, no. It's still, like you said, the things that we had to cut back, at least get to this point, it doesn't interact with it done. It could be done in stages. And that's what we asked, what we came up with with this question.
Because do we do that whole thing and then come along with the lighting?
But again, the cost was asked.
No, I understand.
The main idea of that too was that there is sections right now. If the lighting were to be done, that stuff that could be done in the parkway where we're not tearing up a road that was just done. Water mains are underneath that roadway. You know what I mean? So, if you do the roadway, you can't do the water. I mean, you can, but you're tearing up all grain and road. If 10 years down the road, there's funding there, and, you know, you look at doing the decorative street lighting, which I think would be great out in favor of it. I love the idea of the curb and gutters and the lighting. But that's something that could be done through trenching, through parkway. You know what I'm saying? For all the electric and everything else. You're not affecting the road, which is why that actually, you know, that aspect of it was said, okay, that's something that could wait. I'll make a motion for the village to enter into an agreement for engineering services in the amount of, can I do one hundred and forty-five, or should I do one hundred and fifty, if you say?
Do both one and fifty.
You can also absolutely do one and fifty.
Yeah, okay.
An agreement not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete phase one engineering on Penfield Street from Reed to Dixie.
Second.
Motion on report, second one question, the engineering.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Whaley?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Clear?
Yes. Trust you for it. This is the other side of this, which is the loan to secure the capability of being able to get this. As Bob's talked about, it's a hundred and fifty thousand for a ten year period. Would be based on the overall cost of the engineering, so that would also be a not to exceed. We're expecting a, probably a five percent loan. Would be a total of eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, which would be our interest point. And which would be the total loan, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty, or thirty-five, thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty a year. This would come out of the infrastructure account. As Bob's indicated, it would be a commitment for five years to get that paid off. So, any questions on that? Right now, we're just shooting for, right now, the average rate that's out there, we got a little bit shot this long.
The numbers you threw off are estimates, are telling that the...
Right.
No, I said I think you...
Probably a little lower. Right now, that's, we're looking at the average that's out there.
The treasurer has a question, Brian is trying, five years? And my thinking was, get it paid off before we start the big job. You know what I'm saying, so I don't get two payments. We might have one year of two payments.
Yeah, wait, I want to get rid of that payment before the other ones. Well, okay, now, go on with what?
That's a good question. What you're going to concurrently with the others here. Your debt service says one hundred and fifty-two a year. That includes three loans for the first one. I don't believe, I believe it's separate. Or is that the fourth one? Yeah, it's in the application fee cost of one seventy. It's one fifty, and then we need another twenty on the EPA water.
I have a question. Going along with what Kim said. We talked about the village share of five hundred and thirty thousand, right? That would be a ten year, and that would also be infrastructure funds pledged to pay that. Yes, but that would be after your loan is struck. Right now, this loan would pay for your upfront engineer. Yeah, so this, you would want to try to get this paid off as quick as you can, before you get into that next step where you're now in line with the state or the federal government paying your loan down. Because you're going to need to get that eight seventy in, so you've got it, one, the engineering's got to get done. Pay that off, and again, it's going to take a while for the government to decide where they're going to apply these loans. So you're better off, since you see that you can pay it down as quick as you can, with the money you have available. So you don't have to deal with having more out there than you...
Rather than keeping the payments low.
And waiting, and then being able to roll that in with the five thirty. I don't think, no, they won't be able to roll that.
You wouldn't be able to refinance that and jump it into the five thirty.
That would be a separate loan for the fact that, that the loan you're looking at getting is one EPA loan.
Not for the five thirty. The EPA would be the eight seventy for the water.
Right.
The village share of five thirty for the road.
It's, you know, we, we tried to do that a long time ago, when they were trying to pay off. We had an existing loan, and a loan for all the work that was done out of the park. And we tried to roll those together, and it really was not advantageous for the villagers to do that, because it didn't give us any benefit. In fact, if anything, it increased our liability without getting any benefit.
You still have that debt on schedule.
So we...
I didn't know, that's why I was asking, because I didn't know if it would be where you can keep the payments low, you have more money there for infrastructure to be built up. And then, you know, with hopes that, I mean, all these numbers, I mean, even the eight seventy, you know, let's be realistic, I really, I mean, me personally, I don't think the water main project is going to be eight hundred and seventy. This is old engineering estimates. Especially the big thing taken into consideration is the time of year, you know, we've seen it with where...
It's kind of when the contract maxes.
Yeah, you know what I mean? So hopefully, the time of year helped it. But I didn't know if that would be beneficial to keep the payments low and then be able to roll it in when you go for the big one. I think you'd be better off getting it behind you.
Okay.
I just make one comment.
Yeah.
It would seem to me that we haven't tested the bank water yet, right?
No, 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 this is, the idea here is, we expect it to be around five or less.
But so, but we don't have an answer. Perhaps there's a different scenario that is more advantageous to us. I just wouldn't want to see you lock yourself into saying, we're going to do a five year loan for a hundred and fifty, and a ten year for five thirty, when maybe we talk to them, and there's a scenario that's more advantageous to us for this combination of loans.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot analysis, we can't go beyond ten on a signature.
You maybe like to look at a few options or something, you know, just to lock yourself to it, is what I'm suggesting.
Right now, we've not tested any of the water.
To my mind, as if there was a motion to be asked, we'd give authorization for the treasurer to shop for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan in terms not to exceed ten year.
I mean, it might be a three year. I guess if the bank said, hey, we'll do a one point five, three year, got to look at it, see if we can afford to pay.
Exactly.
You know? I don't know what a five year would be, or a seven. I would just like to get rid of the payments before the next one comes. I don't like having multiple payments on that account. Yeah, Jonathan, it's possible that you'd like to roll something, you're hedging rates.
At all, at all, at the time that comes up, as Nelson knows, we were trying to get the loan on the park, where we tried to roll that in with the refinance of the water, the water.
But regardless of all the banks, you can't go and negotiate and say, you'd have to say, here's the term that we want, here's how much we want to borrow. You can't negotiate with the banks by saying, well, you know, we can stop this, and the other bank, well, we can do this. I think you got to be pretty fair, is that correct, to each bank?
But that doesn't, the thing is, it doesn't, it doesn't mean you, it doesn't mean you can't go and do it after you've been out there, before you secure the loan for the next portion, and chop the value you need, plus whatever's remaining in your loan.
I think any of this is negotiable, you know, at that point. Starts rolling it in.
I think similar to what you did last time, you guys had some scenarios, you had the bank give you a couple of different options, right? They might be a better, good thing to go. You're saying for repayment, I like the five year, best just to get rid of it. I wish we could do the three.
Well, that's, I mean, like, like our treasurer's telling us, I mean, let's not tie our hands, I mean, let's look at all, every option. I mean, do we think in the long run, you have five year? I mean, I think everybody's kind of said that that's probably going to end up being the highest option.
You can, you can still, you can still shoot for five years. Thing is, when you secure the additional loan, you pay off that, you pay that old loan off with your newer loan that's bigger. Right now, you can't decide what's going to happen in the future, for the fact that you don't need that loan right now.
Yep.
You'd have to almost schedule this for five years, because we don't even pay it off, it's five percent, or less. And if it turns out we get out there and we secure that other loan, roll it up if the interest rate, well, I wouldn't want to roll it up if the interest rate is higher.
You could, you could even tie the hands, allow flexibility. Do ten years with no prepayment, kind of like, use your flexibility paying it off. And then also, the bank, in their projections, may be favorable, maybe more favorable rate for a seven year or a three year, depending on the bank's projections. So I think we should go in with, you need a hundred and fifty thousand, you want to pay it off at a certain time period, and give us two, three options. This is what we want. But then give us also what might be more beneficial to the bank than waiting.
It's going to be a crazy motion, Bob. You ready?
I thought I said it very simply.
Well, I don't mind if you could authorize the village treasurer to go out for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan with terms not to exceed ten years. Don't go out, don't shop like they've done before, and come back with a recommendation to report.
So moved.
You got that, Jeanette?
Any questions to that wonderful motion? Most of them.
Claire?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
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 We were approached by the district managers, I believe, from Circle K, Shell, and what was kind of usually known as Hueys. They have asked whether or not they could put up basically a wood rack and a rack of water in front of their business for sale. Both Bob and I explained to them that when that building was built, there was an agreement that there would be no displays in front of that building. And we followed through with the same type of thoughts with Casey's and the Dollar General. We also mentioned that after the Shell station was grandfathered in when they were brought in, but we also emphasized to them that we, at least I, didn't care for what they had in front of Shell, but we understood that it was grandfathered in. Nor did I understand why Shell wanted to have those displays in their parking lot, because their parking lot was small. I'm sorry.
That's why we passed the bank.
No. I wasn't a turn of thought here.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to distract you.
So anyways, we indicated the pros and cons. They asked if we would bring it to the board for a consensus, if we wanted to issue a special use permit to allow those two things, and those two things only, only in front of Hueys. So that is up for discussion tonight amongst you.
And that would be a one year temporary use permit. We have to evaluate.
Is this going in front of the building, or what Shell does is write out front by the parkway?
Well, in, outside front, you've got your, your bench, and then I believe they have their, their wood, well, they also have a wood pile in the parking lot, but they also have a wood pile in front of the business with the water. All they're asking for is the two racks that you see there in front of the business, near like the windows and the doors, not in the parking lot.
So they have to be on the cement sidewalk?
I had indicated to them that even if they wanted to put bench in the parking lot, they, for lack of better terms, you know, you want to make your parking lot smaller. For quite some time now, they had the cheapest gas around, and they had lines in there, and I don't know why they would want to do that in their parking lot.
Well, Shell, as tight as it is, I'm surprised they put anything in that parking lot.
I totally agree.
I mean, if anything, Hueys is probably the better location to have anything outdoors.
But even then, if you've been there, it's just like I said, lines, they used to put them staying out.
Oh, yeah, those lines.
The lines, I mean, even when the gas wasn't cheap, I mean, there, that is Saturday, it was just a parking lot.
No, that's because you were there.
Yeah.
But isn't this going to set a precedent with these other ones? You know, Dollar General's going to come in here and ask for a one year temporary. You're going to go right down the line, and I think that is a big mistake at, at that Shell station.
We, we made the comment earlier on, when Dollar General came in, and then when Casey's came in, we made that same comment, all the way across, nothing outdoors, because of what we've had, we've seen with the Shell installation. And now, I kind of agree with you, Scott, it looks, we're starting a precedent down that path that we didn't want to go down. I, you got to be just die on this grid, this is...
Actually, we, the precedent we have started is no displays. And that's a lot we want to continue to take, if I, what I understand, correct? At least, you know?
Great, great.
Percy?
God.
I can be charged, Chris.
I mean, are we limiting them on business? That's my only concern, is the village tying their hands. I mean, would they, are they, I mean, in case of the water, they can still sell that inside.
You can still sell wood inside.
I don't feel bad about that, as long as I know that, yeah, they can sell firewood still inside. I mean, is it outside, does that make a difference in the sale or not? I would agree completely, I don't think it's the most attractive thing, but it's not my business. But as long as I know I'm not handcuffing them as to what they can or cannot sell, I, I think I'm in agreement that, you know, these things, they can still sell them inside their store. So I don't think we would be doing that. I think that'd be the only thing that would concern me, is if we're saying, you know, shutting them off on a possibility, but I, I agree.
Rob?
Yeah, I agree too.
I will make the phone call to them tomorrow, since Bob's, I mean, I won't be there tomorrow.
I have to drive to Dwight tomorrow for insurance.
No call. Okay. I will make the call. Any new visits have the board? If not, is there a motion or adjournment?
So moved. Second.
What's the motion, and second? Go home.
Claire?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Aaron? Yes, clear.
Yes.